Could everybody please be upstanding for the prayer and the acknowledgement of country?
Almighty God, we who are gathered together in council pledge ourselves to work in harmony for the welfare and development of our rural city. Guide us, we pray, in our deliberations. Help us to be fair in our judgment and wise in our actions, so that prosperity and happiness shall be the light of our people. Amen. I would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land on which we are meeting, and pay my respects to the elders both past and present. Thank you. I'd like to welcome all councillors and staff to the meeting this evening. It's our first meeting for 2021, and there's a bit to get through. So, welcome, and I hope everybody has some good input on the way through. Present tonight we have CEO Phil Pot, Mr Richard Sexton, Councillor Stefano De Pieri, Councillor Mark Eccle, Councillor Ian Arney, General Manager Development Mandy Whelan, General Management Community Martin Horson, General Manager Corporate Chris Parham, Councillor Liam Wood, Councillor Jodie Reynolds, Councillor Cindy Power, Councillor Glenn Milne, and Deputy Mayor Helen Healy. Item four is apologies and absences. There are no apologies and absences. Item five is confirmations of minutes. There are confirmation of minutes from a special meeting of council held on the 9th of December 2020, a special meeting of council... That's the same one, sorry. An ordinary council meeting held on the 16th of December 2020, and a confidential meeting of council held on the 16th of December 2020. Do I have a mover to acknowledge that? Councillor Healy? Do I have a seconder? Councillor Milne? Would anybody like to speak for that motion, or against that motion? Put the motion to the vote. The motion is carried. Item six on the agenda is a confirmation of council auspice meetings. I have a recommendation that council note the following records of council auspice meetings. There was a planning forum on the 14th of December 2020, a council forum on the 13th of January 2021, and portfolio discussions on the 19th of January 2021. We have a recommendation, and do I have a mover for that recommendation? Councillor Reynolds, a seconder. Councillor Power? Does anyone want to object to the motion? I thought you went to put your hand up Glenn, but you were just touching your glasses. Sorry, you freaked me out mate. I'd like to put the motion, all those in favour. Thank you, the motion is carried. Item seven on the agenda is notice of absence. Thank you, Mr Sexton. Item eight is the mayoral report with a recommendation of item two, that council note the contents of this report. Do I have a mover for that motion? Councillor De Pieri? Do I have a seconder? Councillor Arney? Would I like... Does anybody want to object to the motion? Would anyone like to speak to the motion? I will now put the motion. All those in favour? The motion is carried. We now move to agenda item 9.1, councillor reports, December 2020, and a recommendation at item two, that council note the contents of these reports. Do I have a mover for that motion? Councillor Eccle, yep. And a seconder? Oh, Councillor De Pieri, would you like to let us know of your correction now? Councillor Eccle?
Yeah, thanks Mr Mayor. I didn't attend the Mildura Living Magazine summer launch event, it was on at the same time as another meeting. Thank you. Or another event.
Thank you, Councillor Eccle. Would anybody like to speak for or...? Councillor Healy?
I'd like to speak to my report.
Okay, we'll just... Speak first. Sorry, speak first. Councillor Healy, you can speak to your report.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that during December, I attended the funeral of Barkinji elder Patrick Lawson, and he was a much respected and highly regarded member of our community, particularly of the Mungo Willandra World Heritage Area, so much so that four former executive officers dating back to the 1980s attended his funeral, along with New South Wales and federal government representatives. And I was privileged enough to read some of his poetry at the funeral, because he also won twice the Mildura Writers' Festival Indigenous Writers' Awards, so vale Patrick Lawson. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Healy. Are there any other councillors who'd like to speak to their reports? Councillor Power?
Thank you Mayor. I had a lovely morning with Professor Kumar and Dr Joe. They're both immunologists and specialists in infectious disease. They had travelled here, and they've been travelling here each month on their own cost, pro bono work, and they treat local patients with hepatitis C. They're interested in presenting to council in future at forum regarding having a micro study in Mildura to eradicate hepatitis C, as they feel that we are a good candidate for that with our isolated nature. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Power. Is there any other councillors who'd like to speak? Councillor De Pieri, to your report?
Thank you Mr Mayor. I'd like to begin with reporting that prior to Christmas, and we haven't had a meeting since then, I had the great pleasure of working with our local hospital in providing a little bit of relief to our front... well, to all of the employees. We did... we held a luncheon, and I was a little bit sceptical about the attendance, but then I'm pleased to inform you the 500 people turned up over the space of two and a half hours, and I think it's the first time that everyone, from the workers to the surgeons, were invited to this celebration prior to Christmas to say thank you to all the hard work they have given to us over the last 12 months. So that was terrific, and following that I had the pleasure of hosting a dinner for the young trainee doctors. We have a batch of them coming regularly, and I think this will become a lovely event to be held regularly in order to welcome to our community and try to entice them to stay here or perhaps return, as indeed, picking up on Councillor Power, we see the constant return of Professor Kumar, who is known also to me and does an extraordinary amount of work for this community. I also want to inform you that I am extremely pleased to be appointed to the board of the Birdchip Cropping Group. I've always had an interest in agriculture, because that's where the food comes from, and I look forward to working with them. We'll have our induction days next Monday and Tuesday. The matter of Australia Day in Merbene was interesting, in that we also were reminded and celebrated Leon Wagner, who posthumously received a medal, and it was a very moving moment. In fact, I knew the gentleman well. He drove the Avoca many, many times, he steered the Avoca out of trouble many, many times. I mean, he was a well-known identity. I don't have to wax lyrical about something you all know, but it was a really fabulous moment, and they couldn't have made a better decision. It really consoled me that he got it at a time when people that perhaps are a bit controversial got one as well, if you all know what I mean. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor De Pieri, and he was a character and a wonderful man, Leon Wagner. Any other councillors would like to speak to their reports? Thank you, we'll move on to the next. And I just forgot, the major thing is that we need to put the item, all those in favour of the recommendation at item two. Those in favour? The motion is carried. We move now to agenda item 10.1, which is an answer to a question about sand removal by Councillor De Pieri. Are you happy with that answer, Councillor De Pieri?
Yes, I am Mr Mayor. I think it's one that relates to weather patterns and climate change and so on, and I think that is an issue that's not going to go away easily, and that we will be confronting over time, so I reckon that our discussion on those, on that issue in particular, will continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor De Pieri. We move to item 10.2, a question from Councillor Ian Arney, sealing of the Meridian Road. Are you happy with that answer, Councillor Arney?
Yes, I am. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Arney. We'll move on to item 10.3. That was a question from Deputy Mayor Helen Healy about a local law proposal. Are you happy with that answer, Councillor Healy?
Essentially yes, but the answer I received via email is a little different to the one in the agenda, and I would like the last sentence included in the minutes please, which is, this will be tabled at a future council forum for discussion. Thank you.
Are we okay to follow that up? CEO Phil Pot, thank you. We move now to item 11, which is questions from councillors. Do I have questions? I have one from Councillor Eccle.
Thank you Mr Mayor. I've got three questions.
Sorry, Councillor Eccle, I'll take everybody's names first if that's all right, just to get a bit of procedure going. Councillor Arney, no question. Councillor Wood. Councillor Milne. Thank you, Councillor Eccle, if you'd like. And Councillor Healy, sorry.
Thank you Mr Mayor.
Thank you.
My first question, have we been in touch with the winning tender of the Mildura Country Music Vessel, and whether there will be an event this year, and if so, and then just adding on to that rather than coming back, if so, can we have a full report on their plan for the event in 2021 and the proposed date?
Through you, General Manager Community?
I'll take that on notice, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Horson.
Next question, Mr Mayor. I refer to the Mildura City Council Community Nations' flags in the VIC. I would like accosting acquiring another set, taking into consideration that most of the national nations' embassies would provide them for free anyway, if you wrote a letter, but the static display is impressive, but I think we need to be more creative in celebrating our cultural diversity with the flags, rather than just having them on display at the back of the VIC, which incidentally at the moment's been roped off for some time. If I could have an answer on that, I'd appreciate it.
General Manager Community?
Take that on notice, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor De Pieri, we move to item 10.2, a question from Councillor Ian Arney, sealing of the Meridian Road. Are you happy with that answer, Councillor Arney?
Yes, I am. Thank you Mayor Morika.
Thank you, Councillor Arney. We'll move on to item 10.3. That was a question from Deputy Mayor Helen Healy about a local law proposal. Are you happy with that answer, Councillor Healy?
Essentially yes, but the answer I received via email is a little different to the one in the agenda, and I would like the last sentence included in the minutes please, which is, this will be tabled at a future council forum for discussion. Thank you.
Are we okay to follow that up? CEO Phil Pot, thank you. We move now to item 11, which is questions from councillors. Do I have questions? I have one from Councillor Eccle.
Thank you Mr Mayor, I've got three questions.
Sorry, Councillor Eccle, I'll take everybody's names first if that's all right, just to get a bit of procedure going. Councillor Arney, no question. Councillor Wood. Councillor Milne. Thank you, Councillor Eccle, if you'd like. And Councillor Healy, sorry.
Thank you Mr Mayor.
Thank you.
My first question, have we been in touch with the winning tender of the Mildura Country Music Vessel, and whether there will be an event this year, and if so, and then just adding on to that rather than coming back, if so, can we have a full report on their plan for the event in 2021 and the proposed date?
Through you, General Manager Community?
I'll take that on notice, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Horson.
Next question, Mr Mayor. I refer to the Mildura City Council Community Nations' flags in the VIC. I would like accosting acquiring another set, taking into consideration that most of the national nations' embassies would provide them for free anyway, if you wrote a letter, but the static display is impressive, but I think we need to be more creative in celebrating our cultural diversity with the flags, rather than just having them on display at the back of the VIC, which incidentally at the moment's been roped off for some time. If I could have an answer on that, I'd appreciate it.
General Manager Community?
Take that on notice, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Eccle, do you have another one?
Yes, at the discretion of the Mayor and the CEO, could time be allowed at our future council forum for discussion to be had around the opportunity of council having a comprehensive cultural plan for the municipality, and could that be done preferably prior to the budget process for 2021?
General Manager Community, would you like to take on that one?
I'll take that on notice, Mr Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor De Pieri, do you have a question?
Yes, it is a question of sorts, because this morning I happened to be in the area of Nangialo Colignan, so this really comes from my heart rather than from my head. I wasn't aware of the devastation caused by the freak event there on the 1st of January. I was working on that day, and I wasn't informed, but I understand the damage was very extensive and very grave, and so I wonder if there's been anything, or if there is anything, if we consider any help, or whether we are being asked indeed, or whether they are managing it, and that's that. But it seems to me that a lot of money is being lost, and I wonder if anything can be done to help some of the people who've lost virtually millions. As I said, it's from my heart rather than from my head, and I don't expect to spring a question like this on offices of the council, but just noting how devastating it was really.
Thank you, Councillor De Pieri. We'll take that one on notice if that's okay. Do you have another question, Councillor De Pieri? Councillor Milne?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just had one of my questions asked, actually. I actually went down there the morning after that hailstorm, and yeah, it ran right through from Colignan through to the back of Nangialock. There was substantial amount of almonds on the ground. They were going to try and pick them up off the ground before they rotted and dry them, so substantial damage to citrus and table grape, so we do need to follow that up. My other question is, we currently have the riverfront plan out for public comment, and some major concerns have already been raised publicly and by the councillors. Following the submissions being considered, will there be enough time to change the proposed design, should that need to happen, and meet the expectation and desires of the community, as well as the timelines required for government funding?
General Manager Community?
Take that on notice, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Horson.
Second one is, can I flag the issue of wild dogs attacking stock on farms near state and national parks? It is an issue. There's a farmer out on the edge of the Wipperfield National Park that lost between 60 and 100 sheep to wild dogs. Now, sheep are worth somewhere between $240 and $300 each. It's a big loss. The state government has got a wild dog management programme that they've recently put, I think $6 million worth of funding in. My question is if we can write to the government regarding that programme, and highlight the plight of the farmers in the north west in our area, and see if we can actually push a little bit harder to get a bit more funding into that to try and address the problem.
Thank you, Councillor Milne. We'll take that one on notice.
And the last one is, when will council be able to meet with, or is there already a meeting planned, property and business owners in the mall to discuss issues relating to the commercial future of the precinct?
Through to you, CEO Phil Pot?
Yes, thank you. Through you, Mr Mayor. So, as councillors are aware, we provided a preliminary briefing last week with regard to the current situation with council's adopted position, which is around the CBD plan and some of the preceding work around the mall. And at that discussion, councillors have asked for a further conversation in a couple of weeks amongst councillors, and then I'd anticipate from there, council will be interested to see what other conversations would follow. So, next conversation amongst councillors in a couple of weeks.
Councillor Power?
Thank you. Through you, Mr Mayor. My question is a result of time spent last night with the underruled community regarding their pool. The pool is still leaking and needs a new liner. Funding was allocated in the 2019 budget to upgrade rural pools. It hasn't been spent as agreed with the Recreation Department or carried forward in the current budget. It was listed in the 2019 to 20 budget on page 51, section 4.5.2, Pool Liner for Rural Swimming Pool. It fails to appear in the 2020 to 2021 budget on page 57, Works Carried Forward. The community is wondering, where has that money gone to, and when will a rural pool get a new liner? Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Power. General Manager Development?
Through you Mayor. In my research today, there was actually a response provided back to the community late last year answering those questions, so we'll provide a written report to councillors that spells that out too.
Thank you. I'd appreciate a written report, so I can get back to them as well. Thank you.
Councillor Reynolds?
Thank you. Through you, Mr Mayor. I was at a meeting with the Sunraiser Hockey Club, and they were disappointed that they missed out on substantial funding for a grant that they put in earlier on in the year, probably due to the fact that they're not exactly sure what the status of the land is adjacent to the hockey clubs there. So, my question is, what is the status of that land adjacent to the hockey club? Who does it belong to? And what are the opportunities for the hockey club to develop that land for more hockey fields?
General Manager Community?
I'll take that on notice, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Horson. Sorry, second Reynolds, Councillor.
No, that'd be bad. So, my second question is in relation to bike tracks in the area. We have some, a bike track that had been used about four years ago in Merbene around the river area there, but the bike club hasn't been able to use that track recently, and in fact, council has been discouraging people from using the track by putting logs in the way of the track, which has not necessarily had the effect that they might have wanted. It's actually maybe made the tracks a bit more dangerous and causes damage to the environment. But there may be, and I think there is, a real opportunity for bike tracks in Mildura, as they are great tourist attractions in other parts of Australia, and I think that encouraging people to use outdoor activities and bike tracks and the like is well in line with our recreation strategy. So, I was wondering, is there a possibility that we could generate a report that talks about costing some potential sites for opportunities for an adventure bike track or two, equivalent to those that are in Adelaide, Brighton, Yakandanda, for example, you know, within certain timeframes, if that's possible?
General Manager Community?
Through you, Mr Mayor. I mean, I'll take the majority of the question on notice, but with regard to something like that, that would have to come back to council as a budget new initiative. It's not currently in any budget strategies at the moment, so I'd hesitate to guess that would come back as part of the budget discussions.
Thank you, and I'm aware that you've just come back from holidays too, so thanks very much for rocking up tonight, having all these questions thrown at you. Appreciate it. Cheers.
Thank you, Mr Horson, and thank you, Councillor Reynolds. Councillor Healy?
Ditto what Councillor Reynolds says, because here comes another one. So, with the approaching budget, can we have constructive feedback defining requirements to provide resources for gender equality, elevated by having a gender equality portfolio, to support the work of the past three years addressing family violence and gender equality issues and impact on both men and women?
Through you, General Manager Community?
Through you, Mr Mayor. I'll take that on notice.
Thank you, Mr Horson.
Fair enough, and thank you.
Thank you for all the questions, councillors, and thank you for all the answers, general managers. We move to item 12, which is notices of motion, and I don't believe we have any. Move to item 13, which is petitions, joint letters and deputations. Has there been a deputation lately, and are we allowed to just pop one in? So, we'll move to 13.1. It's a petition for Ash Avenue, Coolong, with a recommendation at item two, that council note the petition, and that this matter be considered within the management report, item 14.5, of the January ordinary meeting tonight. So, do I have a mover for that motion for petition? Councillor De Pieri, a seconder? Councillor Milne? Is there anyone who would like to speak for the motion, or against the motion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour? The motion is carried. We move to item 14, which is management reports. Item 14.1 is the community engagement policy with a recommendation at item two, that council adopt the revised community engagement policy, CP 020, as presented below. Do I have a mover for that motion? Councillor Reynolds? Do I have a seconder? Councillor Healy? Everybody's a bit shy tonight. Sorry, I've lost my spot. Does anybody want to object to that motion? Would anyone like to speak to the motion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour? The motion is carried. Helen, did you...? Councillor Healy would like to talk, speak to the motion, so...
I'd just like to make a comment on the community engagement policy. I was very happy to see the list of items that CEO Phil Pot sent through, that are some actions that I guess sit under the community engagement about us as councillors going out and engaging far more effectively with our constituents and broadly across our huge municipality. I also am hoping that in that action plan, we can have a little look at engaging maybe on social media and answering some of the misconceptions out there, and it's something like to explore more in a forum later on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Healy. We now move to item 14.2, the municipal early years plan 2020 to 2025, with a recommendation at item two, that council adopt the draft municipal early years plan 2020-2025 as presented. Can I have a mover for that recommendation? Councillor Reynolds, a seconder? Councillor Arney? Does anybody want to object to the motion? I'd like to put the motion, all those in favour? The motion is carried. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Councillor Reynolds?
Thank you. Through you, Mr Mayor. I think it's a great plan. I really like it, but I think that there's been a little bit of discussion about some things that could possibly be included along the lines of some gender equity association with it, so if there's some more opportunity to look at the plan again at some stage... So if there's some more opportunity to, to look at the plan again at some stage, just with some minor details, that would be great.
You councillor Reynolds? We move to item fourteen point three, the media relations policy, CP zero four nine, that had a recommendation of item two that council note the report continues to lay on the table until such times as an updated media relations policy is finalised. So do I have a mover for that? Councillor Healy? Do I have a seconda? Councillor Power? Does anybody want to object to the motion? Would anyone like to speak to the motion? I'll now put the motion to the vote, all those in favour? The motion is carried. We now move to item fourteen point four, with a recommendation at item two that council note the confidential minutes of the Audit and Risk Committee meeting on the fourth, on the fourth of twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, sorry, number four, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, held on the second of December twenty twenty. Do I have a mover for that motion? Councillor Healy? A seconda?
With a question.
Seconded with a question councillor Millen?
Yeah. The question relates to page ninety-five, down at the bottom of the page where it says adopted an audit and risk committee skills matrix. External members agreed to complete the skills matrix as part of an individual assessment of their skills. Are the internal members also doing the same? Because I think with any skills matrix, it's handy to have the skills of all involved.
General manager corporate.
Oh, sorry, pressed the button. Sorry, the objective of that skills matrix was primarily around the advertising and process that we undertake with the independent audit committee members. And so that when we have a committee member who is, is coming to the end of their term, that we can adequately assess that the skills on the committee meet, I guess, what we require in a, in a broad terms and then the consideration of the applications coming in. So in terms of the mayor and deputy mayor, who are currently the portfolio holders for that, we hadn't intended that that skills matrix would apply to them, it was more for the external community members.
Yeah, thanks for that. Thank you, general manager corporate, thank you councillor Millen. Does anybody want to object to the motion? Would anybody like to speak to the motion? I will now put the motion to the vote, all those in favour? The motion is carried and councillor Healy, time for a comment.
Thank you Mayor Monica, I just wanted to say that I'm new to the Audit and Risk Committee and I just wanted to commend all the independent members on that committee and us as well, what you see is what you get. But very professional, very diverse, lots of different angles that it comes from, but just very impressed by the professionalism of that group. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Healy. We now move on to item fourteen point five, with a recommendation at item two that council continue to undertake planned intersection and road maintenance works to Ash Avenue Koolong as per the requirements identified in the Road Management Plan and investigate the future funding opportunities for the upgrade of Ash Avenue Koolong to be, to a sealed road based on the justification typically used for road upgrades, but also in context with other priority roads within the municipality. Do I have a mover for that motion? Councillor Arnie, a seconda? Councillor Reynolds, sorry councillor Millen? You're right mate. Does anybody want to object to the motion? I would like to put the motion, sorry.
Is it possible, is it possible to ask for a clarification?
Yes, yeah.
Investigate any future funding opportunities for the upgrade. It seems if, a little bit vague to me. Can we be a bit firmer about what we, we can do or can't do anything about this?
General manager development.
Through you Mayor, funding opportunities become available from state and federal governments for various road projects. One of the examples is a programme called Roads to Market. So funding does become available, it usually requires matching funding from council to do that, but there are certainly opportunities through various programmes to get that funding.
Further clarification, Mr Mayor?
Councillor Eccle and then councillor Reynolds.
Isn't it correct that if we go into a budget process, that there is a hierarchy of roads that need to be done and this would be one of those to be considered?
Through you Mayor, yes, roads are prioritised based on a number of factors, so they're always considered being measured against the same criteria, I guess, and that's how they're prioritised.
Councillor Reynolds?
Thank you, through you, Mr Mayor. I asked a question about the recommendation, one which is to continue to undertake planned inspection of the road as per the requirements in the Road Management Plan. And the question that I asked was, you know, surely we need to consider that the existing maintenance works, the procedure isn't sufficient. If the residents are actually, you know, raising a petition, then perhaps the current regime is, is lacking. And I received a very comprehensive answer from the manager, which was very enlightening. Thank you very much for that. But it still, I think, requires further investigation from us all as, as a, as a council, is if we are getting lots of people who are getting back to us on the, on the state of the road.
Point of order, Mr Mayor. A question or speaking to the motion or?
I'm speaking to the motion, yeah.
I'll thank you councillor Millen for the point of order. Yes, it is speaking to the motion, but could you bring it in a bit tighter, please councillor Reynolds?
What I'm saying is...
Sorry.
Nope. I'm, what I'm, what I'm, I'm not objecting to the, to the motion, but I'm requesting that we have a further discussion at some point about how roads are maintained and how we budget the roads are within the council and within the community over the longer term.
It'd just be much more beneficial if it was framed as a question.
As a question.
A consular's question. Thank you councillor Reynolds, oh thanks councillor Millen.
Okay. Okay.
We, back through you, general manager, development.
Through you Mayor, I actually think that would be a good idea to come to council and explain more in depth how that works, how the road hierarchy works. And the Road Management Plan is currently, is currently being reviewed and that will come back through council and goes out for community consultation, so that would be a really good opportunity to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a mover and a seconda, councillor Arnie and councillor Millen. We've had a, people have spoken to the motion, would anyone else like to speak to the motion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour? The motion is carried. We move to item fourteen point six on the agenda, with a recommendation at item two that council, having caused notice of planning application number zero zero five point two zero two zero dot zero 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 zero, I went all binary then, nine two dot zero zero one, to be given under section fifty-two of the Planning and Environment Act nineteen eighty-seven and having considered all the matters required under the section, under section sixty of the Planning and Environment Act nineteen eighty-seven, decides to issue a notice of decision to refuse to grant a permit under the provisions of clause thirty five point zero seven dash one, apostrophe clause thirty five dot zero seven slash four and clause fifty-two dot twenty-nine dot two, dot two of the Mildura Planning Scheme in respect of the land known and described as Wentworth Road Yalta, CA seventeen sec, the parish of Murbane, for the use and temper, the use and development of land for a dwelling and the creation of an access to a road, zone category one, for the following reasons. I won't read them out as, as read. Do I have a mover for that motion?
I've got a question, Mr Mayor.
We'll take that question councillor Millen.
When this matter was laid on the table, it was actually a, a motion that had been put up by councillor Healy. So is that the matter that we should be dealing with? Because that, it was laid on the table as the motion that she moved and was seconded? Or does, is it reverting back to the original motion?
Councillor Millen, just take a quick bit of advice on that, if that's okay?
Thank you.
Yes, the, we understand that the matter was moved by councillor Healy as an alternative motion and I believe was seconded, but we just trying to confirm that, in which case it should have come back in that format. But let me just please, just spend a minute just checking that, please.
No, no. Councillors, if it's okay, we'll let the administration do a little bit of research and we'll move on to item fourteen point seven and come back to fourteen point six. So item fourteen point seven is, is with a recommendation at item two that council resolved to object to the residential zoning currently sought by the Department of Treasury and Finance for sites four, five, six, Passendale Avenue, Murbane West and thirteen, Jenner Street, Murbane. Inform the Department of Treasury and Finance that for the purposes of the immediate rezoning request currently sought, the most orderly zone or zones in rural living zone for four, five, six, Passendale Avenue, Murbane West and both the rural living zone and farming zone for thirteen, Jenner Street, Murbane, and provide the Department of Treasury and Finance with a written response detailing the above mentioned resolutions. Do I have a mover for that motion? Councillor Reynolds? Do I have a seconda? Councillor De Pieri? Does anybody want to object to the motion? Councillor Millen? Who would like to, sorry, thank you councillor Millen, I will now ask councillor, sorry, I will now ask councillor Reynolds as the mover. Sorry, did I get a seconda? Oh councillor De Pieri, sorry. The mover to open the debate councillor Reynolds. Thank you, sorry about that.
Thank you, through you, Mr Mayor. I think that this is a reasonable request. I think that it's more in keeping with the area that the rezoning request be, you know, it's more orderly for it to be a rural living zone. It's to have the, the smaller blocks there and have the tighter living in that area isn't in keeping with the area. So yeah, it just, to me, it makes sense for it to be a rural living zone. There's a demand for that kind of property out there in that area. I think that people would appreciate those blocks being rural living zone as well. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Reynolds. I now ask councillor De Pieri as the seconda to speak to the motion if they choose.
No need.
Nodding.
No need, no need to speak, it's self-explanatory.
Thank you councillor De Pieri. Thank you councillor De Pieri, I'll now ask councillor Millen as the objector to speak to their motion.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The, I think there's some interesting aspects to this application and that is the government in fact asking for land out in that area to be zoned residential. And there's quite some debate in council about residential land in the farming zone and outside the city. But with this one, I actually happen to agree with the government's viewpoint. If you look at the map on page eleven, there's residential land right around this piece of land and I just think it's a fair ask by the government. And residential lots out in that area have to be able, because there's no sewerage, they need to be large sized lots anyway, so they're still going to be quite big, lots of land because they have to be able to fit your sewerage systems in there. And I would, I guess, like to support the government in what they're asking for in that area in particular. And maybe they might even note that when we have to deal with other areas in the farming zone and other requests from people in our community. Because part of the, one of our other applications talks about opportunistic planning and maybe that's, fits in this equation here, that that might be so with the applicant. But also, I sort of go back to, we've got the council prayer and in that it says, fair in judgment, wise in our actions, so that prosperity and happiness shall be the lot of our people. And I think we need to think about that a little bit more and I'd like to make the government happy by actually supporting what they have requested. So thank you.
Thank you councillor Millen. Would any other councillor like to speak to the motion? Councillor Eccle?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, just a quick word, while I'm sympathetic with councillor Millen's objection, I don't think this is the, this is the right situation in regards to displaying to, or giving intent to the government in regard, the planning minister, in regards to this particular issue. I think if we, the most important issue with this discussion tonight is that we take advice from our local planners and we've been through this in a forum presentation and the opportunity was there to air our indifference, which we did. And, and I believe that the decisions made by our planning department are in keeping with the, the planning for Mildura.
Thank you councillor Eccle. Is there any other councillor who'd like to speak for or against the motion? Thank you councillors, I will now ask councillor Reynolds as the mover to close the debate if they choose, if she chooses, if they. Thank you.
Through you, Mr Mayor, I'd thank the other councillors for their, sharing with us their positions and their attitudes to this. The land as it stands is, is vacant, it's not being used at all. As councillor Millen pointed out, it doesn't have the opportunity to have water or sewerage pipes attached to it, so having a denser population there really doesn't make any sense. Rural living zone is the one that, it makes more sense there and there is a demand for that kind of property in that area. So I agree with councillor Eccle that the planners have made the right choice and decision in this, in this note.
Thank you councillor Reynolds. I will now put the motion to the vote, all those in favour, please raise your hand. Oh, thank you. Thank you. All those against, thank you. The motion is carried. If it's okay, CEO Phil Pot, can we move back to item fourteen point six?
Oh yes, thank you, and apologies for the confusion in this one councillor. So we have gone back to the minutes as adopted by council just earlier in this meeting. And the minutes show that the item was basically put with the original recommendation and then that because of the confusion with the advice at the time, that the matter was then let, left lay on the table and to be a subject of a report to the next ordinary meeting of council scheduled for today. So what we've done is brought back the original report because the minutes don't see the conclusion of the process that we had commenced with the alternative motion at the last meeting. So the report as it stands is the correct report, recognising that that other process did not conclude at the last meeting and it was left lie on the table.
So we're happy to proceed. Thank you for pointing that out too. Thank you for pointing that out too. Councillor Milne, are you happy with that response? Yep. So, back to item 14.6 with a recommendation at item two, I won't read the whole thing, it's use and development of land for a dwelling and creation of an access to the road, a zone, category one. Do I have a mover for that motion? Councillor Reynolds, a seconder? Councillor Echol? Does anybody want to object to the motion? Councillor Milne? Thanks councillor Milne. I will now ask councillor Reynolds as the mover to open the debate.
Thank you through you, Mr Mayor. So, when this motion first came to council last month, I argued that to, to allow this development to go ahead would be against the planning recommendations that we have for that area. It's a, in the farming zone, there are certain recommendations and legislation and council rules that we have to follow when we're accepting any permits in that area. This simply does not meet any of those, any of those rules as per the recommendations that we see in front of us today. There is some room for us as a council and as a legislative body to think about, you know, the possibility of rezoning some of these areas. That is the way to go for orderly and purposeful projects and development. We have to think about rezoning if that's, if that's going to be the case. Yes, it might take a little bit longer, but when we're approving these applications on an ad hoc basis for certain people because it's really not the way to do planning in any town anywhere, so for me, this, this proposal has to be refused.
Thank you councillor Reynolds. I will now ask councillor Echol as the seconder to speak to the motion.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I go back further than just the last meeting with this particular issue, it's come to us with regularity. I draw attention, council's attention to dot point two. The proposal is inconsistent with the local planning policy in relation to the agricultural land and rural development, specifically clause 21.06-1, and the, and the clause 21.08-1, which seek to ensure that the new dwelling, and I emphasise that, the new dwelling will assist in growing agricultural enterprise and to protect rural land for agriculture. And, and I agree with councillor Reynolds' summarisation. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Echol. I will now ask councillor Milne as the objector to speak to his objection.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I guess my issues are based around whether this is in fact productive farmland, and, you know, the guidelines for protection of agricultural land as presented in the planning delegation report, page 285 if people would like to look at it, talks about the protection of agricultural land, and is relevant as the following objective. The objective is achieved through the following strategies: identify areas of productive agricultural land, including land for primary production and intensive agriculture. And we've heard that this land isn't being used for any sort of agriculture or production at the moment. In fact, it's bare, it's got no native vegetation on it, and it's certainly not suitable for intensive agriculture. You can't get water on it, Lower Murray have said that, there isn't water available. Also on page 286 says, avoid the, to avoid permanent removal of productive agricultural land from the state's agricultural base without consideration of the economic importance of the land. Now, I've considered the economic importance of that bit of land. It's not important at all, it's got nothing on it. You can't put a pump on it, it's very hard, almost impossible to get a pump on the river. So, how are you going to make that important land and valuable agricultural, horticultural land? You can't, not at the moment, and it's not likely to change unless somebody makes some more water. We're talking about climate change, that's probably not going to happen. Protect productive farmland that is of strategic significance. I don't believe it's of strategic significance. It also then goes on to consider the land, the desirability and impacts of removing the land from primary production given its agricultural productivity, while it's not producing. So, all we're moving, removing is a landlot, a houselot, or the land to put the house. Compatibility between the proposed or likely development and the existing use of surrounding land. If you go for a drive down Yalta, most of those blocks of land down there are small lots of land, a couple of acres with a house on it, and they might have a horse or something, but they're not being used for intensive agriculture. They're also right on the edge of the river and the salt issues and everything else. So, the next item, this is, yeah, still on page two, ethics, 286, avoid the subdivision of productive agricultural land from diminishing the long-term product, productive capacity of the land. I don't, there's enough in this report to say it's not productive. You know, we're trying to call something what it isn't. Page 289 says, it's my observation that Muljura's agricultural land base, particularly in the MOIA, is very fragmented, not just because of the intrusion of smaller subdivisions sought to establish rural living style properties, this is because blah, blah, blah. This land's not in the MOIA anyway, it's outside of it, and that's why you can't connect into the system and you need to put your own pump. So, I, I just haven't got an issue with it. It still leaves the land open to, for somebody, if they build a house, they can still run sheep or goats, that's providing the wild dogs don't eat them. So, you actually need somebody out there with a house to actually look after them should they wish to do that. And again, I'll just go back to, if we take a drive out at Yalta, that's a rural living zone right along that edge of the river there. There's the old wood mill, that's been chopped up into housing lots, there's a gardening business down there, there's all sorts of things. And it's one of those really nice areas that you can establish and live, well, within walking distance to the river, but it's not, it's really not interrupting anybody, and it's not considered an area where people would grab the land to plant grapes. And in fact, clearing that land wouldn't go down that well. There's been another issue with a block of land in that area where people actually did clear the salt bush, and council hit them with a $50,000 fine. So, they tried to turn the land back in the farming zone, back to using for agriculture. And I just can't see that happening, there's too many things, or too many laws that are going to get in the road and too many costs to actually turn it back into any sort of fruit-growing property. So, I would be happy to see them have the opportunity to build on that block of land.
Thank you councillor Milne. Would any other councillor like to speak against the motion?
Yes, and I would like to give my reasons, Mr Mayor. I am.
Are you speaking against the motion?
I am, I am. Because I, I understand how this may send a wrong message. Councillor Reynolds is writing saying, is that okay, Mr, Mr Mayor?
Just referring that councillor Milne is argued against the motion?
I am, I am in support of councillor Milne, exactly.
That is fine.
Right, and I want to give my... I understand the matter of these people having broken the rules over time, of having illegally built, I understand, I understand that this could be seen as a precedent, but this matter has been before us before, and many other times before, it's gone to vicket, it's been going on and on for, for months, and it's probably costing us a huge amount of money. But, and I would think that this is something that should encourage us in the future to have a look at all this zoning business in relation to agricultural use versus dwellings, et cetera, et cetera. My problem is a moral one, there's, I am conflicted, and that's, I'm reluctantly supporting the, the, the motion of, or the position of councillor Milne, because we collected the rights from these people over a number of years. So, I, it's a classic case where we've been caught, you know, wanting to have our cake and eating it as well. So, it's a moral position for me, I'm conflicted about it. Of course, I think you should not condone or give people a free pass when they've flaunted the law and, and actually, you know, behave in a, in a fashion which is not acceptable. But by the same token, we should be more alert, and this should be a lesson for us. We should say, well, one arm of our organisation is declaring that illegal, but another arm is going to collect the money. I think that the two positions are not sustainable, and therefore for this time, and this time only, I would point against this motion. But that's not a habit in my, in my repertoire. I would like to stress that this is a position that I'll take only once and only in relation to this matter.
Thank you very much councillor De Pierri. I'll repeat the call to speak for or against the motion from any of the councillors.
I'd like to speak for the motion.
Councillor Healy, yep?
In the interest of good debate, I would like to ask if, if intensive agriculture as per the Act and as per these clauses requires water? Are we not opening the gates to set a precedent that people just shut down their water, rip out their irrigation infrastructure, sell off the water, and then come to us saying that the land is unproductive, nothing I can do about it? I want what he's got, what she's got. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Healy. I'll just repeat the call one more time to speak for or against the motion. Thank you councillors. I'll now ask councillor Reynolds as the mover to close the debate if she chooses to. Thank you councillor Reynolds.
Thank you through you, Mr Mayor. So, while councillor Milne, thank you very much for your, for your debate, but while councillor Milne may well have considered the economic performance of the land, I do prefer to get my advice from experts in these areas. Identifying the areas that are productive agricultural land is not able to be deduced from a couple of letters that were written to people about a particular development in that area. These things need to be identified by extensive reports by experts in those areas. If we are going to identify areas that are no longer viable for agriculture, let's do it in a planned and sustainable way, or we will end up with pockets of development here and there that are isolated from services and that we, we end up being a hindrance to, to future development. The statement that the land would need to be cleared for it to be productive is also misleading. There are other forms of agriculture that this land could support, that would actually then, you know, once that had been achieved, then we could make the argument for having a dwelling there that supported that form of agriculture. So, the statement that the land needs to be cleared and that would be very expensive is misleading. So, once again, you know, take the argument back to the fact that if we are going to talk about developments for rural living here, then it needs to be done in a, in a planned way, going through a rezoning process. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Reynolds. I'd just really like to point out and appreciate the level of debate about this topic this evening. It's not easy to make decisions about this because of its complexity, so I appreciate all that from my colleagues. I will now put the motion to the vote. All those in favour of the motion, please raise your hands. All those against the motion? The motion has been voted down 5-4. Thank you.
And we have the motion from last council meeting that was part of this. Can I propose that we put councillor Healy's, or quite some work put into that, put that forward as a motion for approval?
Thanks councillor Milne, would you just confer for a moment if that's okay? Yep.
Thank you through the mayor. I'm not certain that we have that alternative in front of us at this point. I might just seek some advice from the general manager of development with regard to any alternative process, whether we bring it back to the next...
Everybody's clicking on it.
Through you, Mayor. I don't know about the governance process, but we will need an alternate motion.
I would just need clarification to be comfortable that everybody had read and been over the previous motion which was left aside. I just want to... Sorry, we're just, still conferring for a second there, if you give us a minute, please.
I apologise again for the confusion with regard to process, but the, the, what we would need to do is, we, we will need an alternative, but if councillors haven't got an alternative in front of them, then it may require the item to come back again next meeting with the alternative. Unless there's an urgency, I'm conscious of the time that this item has already taken to resolve, but because you will need to, in order to vote, you would need to have the resolution clear in front of you, that seems to be the only alternative unless we can somehow...
Can I have...
Councillor Echol? Mark, you have Mike, mate?
The, the motion's been defeated, so there's a, there's a, an alternative motion, and if any councillor has the alternative motion before them and they can read it out, it's up to the individual councillor to be able to come forward, I would think, to read that motion from the previous meeting.
Look, I'm, as the chair, sorry councillor, I'll let you go first, mate.
Could we ask the deputy mayor to read out the mo, well, actually, I've got it in front of me? Okay. That's, the council having caused notice of planning application number 005 dot 2020 six nought ninety-two dot double O one, to be given under section 52 of the Planning Environment Act 1987, and having considered all the matters required under section 60 of the Planning Environment Act 1987, decides to grant a permit under the provisions of clauses 35.07-1 and 35.07-4 of the Muljura Planning Scheme in respect of the land known and described as 583 Wimporth Road, Yalta, CA 17, section H, parish Merbine, for the use and development of a dwelling in accordance with the endorsed plans with the application dated 23 June 2020, subject to the following conditions: the use and the development as shown on the endorsed plans must not be altered or modified without the prior consent of the responsible authority. Within three months of the issue of the certificate of occupancy for the dwelling approved under this permit, all other existing buildings located on the site must be decommissioned so that it cannot be used as a dwelling as defined in the scheme to the satisfaction of the responsible authority. Access to the dwelling must be provided via an all-weather road with dimensions adequate to accommodate emergency vehicles to the satisfaction of the responsible authority. The dwelling must be connected to a potable water supply or have an alternative potable water supply with adequate storage for domestic use as well as for firefighting purposes. The dwelling must be connected to a retic, to an elect, we took out reticulated, the dwelling must be connected to an electricity supply or have an alternative energy source to the satisfaction of the responsible authority. All stormwater runoff from the buildings and works must be retained on-site to the satisfaction of the responsible authority. So, that's the motion. Oh, hang on, there's more. Prior to the commencement of the use of mental plans must be submitted to and approved by the head transport for Victor... the head transport for Victoria. When approved by the head of transport Victoria, the plans must be endorsed by the responsible authority, will then form part of the permit. The plans must be drawn to scale and dimensions. Plans must be generally in accordance with the plans prepared by J C Design Group dated June twenty twenty, drawing number oh one five dash one one four, but modified to show the removal of the southern vehicle crossing on the site's eastern boundary and reinstatement of the road reserve, and the existing northern crossover driveway on the site's eastern boundary to be modified to the satisfaction of the head of transport for Victoria Authority. Prior to the commencement of the southern vehicle crossing on the site's eastern boundary must be removed and the area reinstated to the satisfaction of and at no cost to the head of transport Victoria. Prior to the commencement of the use of the existing northern crossover and driveway on the site's eastern boundary must be modified to the satisfaction of the head transport Victoria Authority and at no cost to the head transport Victoria Authority. The crossover driveway and associated works must be formed to such levels and drains so that it can be used in accordance with the endorsed plans, treated with an all-weather seal or durable service. Driveways must be maintained in a fit and proper state so as not to compromise the ability of vehicles to enter and exit the site in a safe manner or compromise operational efficiency of the road or public safety example by spilling gravel onto the roadway. The above mentioned planning permit expires if one of the following circumstances arise: A) that development has not started within two years of the date of the permit; B) the development has not completed within four years of the date of the permit; C) the use does not start within four years of the date of issue of the permit; or D) the use is discontinued for a period of two years. The responsible authority may extend the periods referred to if a request is made in writing in accordance with sixty-nine of the Planning Environment Act nineteen eighty-seven. Full stop.
Thank you very much, councillor Millen. Happy to accept that into, as the alternate or a new motion, a new motion, moved by councillor Millen. Do I have a seconder? Or councillor Wood?
Kind of clarification, thanks, Mr Mayor.
Question from councillor Ekel?
I understand the motion thoroughly, and, and the timelines given, which are important in the, in the capacity, but my question is, and if a council officer can answer this, what does the decommissioning of the dwelling actually mean for the owners? And the Vic Roads issue is, because it's an illegal road, what are the timelines in regards to, and, and what necessary roadworks is necessary in that time, and who, at whose cost is that sealing up that roadway? If I can have those questions clarified by the management, thank you.
Thank you councillor Ekel, general manager development, if you could tackle those, it'd be awesome.
Through you, mayor, I'll start with the last one first, that'd be at the cost of the applicant, the residents, in terms of the road, and in terms of the decommissioning of, there are currently two dwellings on the site, and the decommissioning means that they have, parts of those dwellings need to be removed so they can no longer be used as dwellings. So that will be taking out essential services that we'd normally be in a house that make it livable.
Further question, thanks, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor...
That's fine councillor.
Thank you. Were the applicants in agreement with the, with that, those provisions? Provisions of removing the, the, and decommissioning the works that they inappropriately put to the building?
Through, through you, general manager development?
Through you, mayor, I think we're talking about another process, oh, yeah, I said through you, mayor. I think we're talking about another process now, that is a VICAT process, and that's around enforcement rather than this planning application, so that they did need to consent to VICAT orders to remove the dwellings prior to this application being suspended.
Just a little bit of latitude at this point in time because of the complexity of it. Any other councillors have any questions before we continue for clarification? So we'll move on. So we have councillor Millen moved the motion, councillor Wood seconded the motion. Does anybody want to object to the motion? How's councillor Wood? Yeah, sorry. Would anybody want to object to the motion? Would anyone like to speak to the motion? Or I'll put the motion, all those in favour? One, two, three, four, five, six. All those against? The motion is carried six-three. Once again, thank you for the, the well-thought-out and considered debate. We now move to item seventeen, which is, oh, sorry, I've gone too far. Sorry. What was it, item fifteen, Richard, sorry? Urgent business and there is none? That's not, I think the urgent business just went through, didn't it? So now I will ask to move a motion into confidential. Oh, sorry, I can't even find the page. So we go to community questions, I'll let CEO Phil Pot deal with them while I find my spot.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Tonight we have two community questions, which have been received in writing as we're unable to have people in our gallery still at this point. So the first question is from Julie Calaby, I hope I've pronounced that correctly, it's with regard to Rail Freight Alliance. So the question is, I wish to ask how much council has spent on membership, delegate fees and extras of Rail Freight Alliance and Central Murray Region Transport Forum? What is council doing to progress passenger rail, one of the four pillars of Muljura Future Ready? And a question about whether the councillors are aware that five hundred thousand was allocated to the passenger train in the original MFR, Muljura Future Ready in two thousand and seventeen, and requesting an update on the expenditure to date. We will answer a couple of portions of this question tonight, but some of it will be taken on notice. So with your permission, Mr Mayor, I'll hand first to Mr Sexton and then to Mr Horson.
Through you, my mayor. In relation to costs to council for membership, delegate fees and extras of Rail Freight Alliance, I can confirm that the annual subscription last year was five thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars. In relation to Central Murray Region Transport Forum, last year's subscription on an annual basis was four thousand four hundred dollars. It wasn't asked, but just to make further clarification, we also subscribe three hundred dollars per annum to the North West Rail Alliance. In answer to the second part of that question in relation to, apart from memberships, the fees and extras, probably fair to say last year, it's quite an unusual year, but with Covid restrictions, there were no other expenses allocated to either of those categories. And I'll hand now to general manager, community, for the subsequent parts of the question.
Thank you. Mr Sexton, through you, Mr Mayor. There has, we're well in the way of finishing off the study for the transport study, which is the main bit of work that we were commissioned out of the Muljura Future Ready with regard to the options for transport in general, of which rail will be considered as part of that. And we'll be coming back to council mid this year with, we'll be coming back to council forum soon with the view to complete the study mid two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr Horson.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So we'll certainly provide additional information as appropriate back directly to Julie, who's asked those questions. And again, Mr Mayor, a second question asked today is from Terry Fay. Why aren't you using all local people for the next stage of the riverfront? In answer to this one, I'll turn firstly to Mr Parham with regard to the procurement process, and then to Mr Horson.
Thank you, CEO, and through the mayor. When council undertakes a tendering process, there's a number of criteria and weightings against each of those criteria, and when a tender is received, the subsequent assessment occurs against that. The tender does include all the criteria and the percentage weightings, and that can vary from tender to tender, depending on what the elements of, of it are. However, I can say in this instance that, that with the tenders received, there were a variety of tenders with some, some high prices and some low prices, and in this particular case, the, the tenderer that was selected was, was in between those two ranges. They weren't necessarily the highest and weren't necessarily the cheapest. It is very important to understand that we do apply a, in terms of how the weighting and the criteria is established, it is, it is around best value to the community through these processes, and, and that's why we do allocate different percentage weightings to those criteria, and that is outlined in the tender documents that the tenders respond to. So from a procurement perspective, that, that's clear and transparent upfront to the tenders who are replying, and each of their responses are assessed accordingly. Thank you.
Mr Horson?
Through you, Mr Mayor. I don't have a lot more to add in the sense that that is the process we've gone through for stage one to date. The further, the actual construction will obviously go through the same process, and local contractors are more than welcome and in effect encouraged to apply when that process is open. With regard to stage one of the riverfront proposal, I would note that over seventy percent of the work and seventy percent of the twenty odd million dollar budget went to local contractors using the process that Mr Parham just outlined.
Thank you, Mr Horson. That concludes the community questions. We now will move into confidential business, but before that, I will inform you that we have four items, seventeen point one, seventeen point two, seventeen point three and seventeen point four. Seventeen point one is a tender award for the Orimple drainage upgrade, seventeen point two is a St Matteo Avenue and Tenth Street micro-surfacing contract, seventeen point three is a tender award for fire services upgrade at the Alfred Deacon Centre, and seventeen point four is to increase to the provisional sum in the contract eighteen nineteen of the Boundary Intersection Road Works. Do I have a mover to move into confidential? Councillor Ekel, a seconder? Councillor De Pierri? I'll put the motion of moving into confidential. The motion is carried. So thank you, everybody, for tuning in tonight. I would like to thank everybody for coming and having some robust debate about some of the issues that are bubbling around in Muljura, and we will thank you for tuning in, and we'll go into confidential now, and we'll see you in one month. Thank you very much.